I would like to. I would like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is five thirty-two P. M., and I will start with a roll call from my far left.
Jenny Wook, Council.
Seth Storset, Council.
Lee Rodenberg, Council.
Brenda Lycans, Council.
Roger Henderson, Council.
Robin Denson, Council.
Mary Barber, Council.
Thank you, all seven present, and will you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skobabsh Band of the Pialup Tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest-standing historic villages of the people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. And with that, are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We have a presentation this evening on a wildfire resiliency policy from Dr. Ellie Klaus McGann from Climate Pierce County. Welcome Ellie. Thank you for being with us this evening. Come on forward.
So hello.
Hello.
This is going to be interesting because I'm going to occasionally be glancing over there. Josh is going to be doing the slides. Occasionally, I'm going to say, you know, next slide, please, which I hate doing, but I don't know how else to do it here. So thank you for this, for your service here in Gig Harbor and for this opportunity to speak tonight. I am Dr. Ellie Klaus McGann, and I am speaking for Climate Pierce County. Our presentation is a collaborative effort from many people representing many organizations that all have concerns about the increasing likelihood of wildfires in the wildland-urban interface, which I will call the wooie mostly. Given climate change, I want to thank Fire Prevention Chief Eric Waters, Cape Peninsula firefighter Dale Hydall, retired DNR wildfire manager Charlie Burns, and Pierce Conservation District Nick Kusick, who's been instrumental in helping with this conversation. We've had lots of conversations and they have lots of expertise. I am not a wildfire specialist. I am just here advocating for the climate and its impacts and how to reduce them. I also want to thank Councilmember Henderson for the invitation to speak tonight. He first expressed interest and got the ball rolling. So please interrupt me when you have questions or need a bit of time to process. I sometimes speak too fast and may slide, fly through things, so just go, you know, slow down. So tonight, we ask you to consider incorporating wildfire resilience policy in your comprehensive plan update and to work collaboratively across Pierce County addressing wildfire resilience. This presentation will share direction from Vision 2050, Gig Harbor's commitments to climate action, the wooie and Gig Harbor, and then wildfire risks and planning. Vision 2050 policies inform the countywide planning policies, as you know, and cities' comprehensive planning. One of the climate impacts is wildfire. This is not listed in the the countywide planning policies. So we're making this extra effort so that it comes to your attention. In making our communities resilient, residents need information on multimodal emergency and evacuation routes. Climate Pierce County also echoes the need to prioritize mitigation of climate impacts on highly impacted communities and vulnerable populations. Environmental justice is integral to our work. Thank you for making climate planning part of your strategic planning. The red bullets of the Gig Harbor climate goals from the recent strategic plan all could include wildfire planning. It is a challenge with the rain right now to even think about wildfire, but let's remember the heat dome from last summer and the drought. That's all it takes, and both will happen more frequently in the future. That's been predicted as temperatures go up. Ors, brush, and houses all provide fuel to wildfire. Add wind in the right direction, as we see in New Mexico right now, and the danger is real. If you follow the provided link on this slide to the story map of Pierce County Wildland- Urban Interface, you get a very different lens through which to view the county. We're not going to look at that tonight, but, you know, have fun. It is really a cool thing to go through. And it also educates us about what the wooie is. This is a view of Gig Harbor, and as you can see, the gray stuff is the urban area, and then Gig Harbor is just surrounded by wooie, even over where the harbor is. So the red is the wildland-urban interface. The yellow is intermix, where you have more structure inside the wooie. And then green is forested area. And what they pay attention to is how much of the land is burnable, so it has to be more than fifty percent. So, you know, Gig Harbor really is in this place where you have a lot of fuel. Should that fuel dry out, you're at risk. Okay, and if you want to reference, this is the map of Gig Harbor. I flipped back and forth a couple times just to see, well, what's the connection between the two, the wooie map and this? And you can see, as you know, there's a lot of trees around here, and it's beautiful because of that, and we'd like to keep it that way. Okay. Wildfire is no stranger to Gig Harbor. Here's just one picture on a slope. If a slope is denuded, it becomes more susceptible to landslide when rains return. And Gig Harbor is, you know, you've seen landslides. There's one near, a friend of mine, Carmella McKelley, I don't know, over by, what's that called, the Sunset Beach. Pretty nasty landslide was over there. Wildfires wreak havoc in Pierce County in two thousand and twenty, and smokestorms have begun common over the last five years. Wildfires burn houses, cars, and infrastructure, not just trees, releasing lung-damaging toxins into the air. This smoke is especially hazardous to the more vulnerable among us who don't have healthy places indoors to escape to. The costs are not only obvious in loss of property, but painful to people who have to miss work from chronic health impacts. The next slide is just a beautiful picture, but the reason why it's beautiful is because of smoke makes the color of the sky what it is there. There is both an immediate price tag to wildfire and a long-term cost. Headwaters Economics has done a deep analysis of the costs, and we see that on average, thirty-five percent of the total cost is immediate, and sixty-five percent is long-term damage recovery for communities, for the ecological consequences, and just the economic consequences like property depreciation and loss of business, which in fact impacts your tax structure and all the rest of it. We've been lucky that May has been proclaimed wildfire month by Pierce County Council. This happened just a couple weeks ago. So this is an opportune time to be thinking about wildfire across the county. You may be familiar with firewise communities. There's a list of them up there. There's a total of seven right now in various stages, and they are neighborhood efforts to adopt practices that make neighborhoods more resilient. It includes an assessment of properties to look at brush clearing, the kinds of plantings you put, where do you put the plantings, and to look at your infrastructure, like porches and fences and all that, and what you're using in your houses. There are other opportunities for community-level efforts supported by DNR and the Pierce County Department of Emergency Management. So this is an actual piece of the proclamation. And what I'd like to draw your attention to is it shows you why wildfire is now on the radar for us and not just for Eastern Washington, and says very clearly, it is about climate change. It's about our changing temperature and it's about us drying out. And then the bottom to focus our attention on the work that needs to be done, which is really, we need to educate and we need to plan. We can't just go forward and do nothing. Promoting the May twenty-six wildfire resiliency webinar through your networks and social media is one avenue for education. Getting residents informed is a big first step. So I'm not really used to talking into a microphone. Can you guys hear me back there? Yeah, great, okay. I just keep hearing, so now it's more, now it's less. Where should I be? I'm not quite sure. Now about planning. Nate Behrens, who's the current DNR Wildlife Manager for Pierce County and more, shared that wildfire prevention comes down to resilient landscapes, fire-adapted communities, safe and effective wildfire response. And that translates into managing vegetation and fuels, protecting homes, communities, and other values at risk, managing human-caused ignitions, and effectively and efficiently responding to wildfire. Policy comes down to thinking about land use, about buildings, and infrastructure more generally, including access and egress for fire trucks on all your roads and around developments, and also for people to be able to get out when there is a wildfire. There needs to be early warning system. How do they know that they need to leave and when to leave? And there needs to be water access and availability for fighting fire. There are abundant resources around to help think through what to prioritize, such as the Gig Harbor Fire Department and the Department of Natural Resources, like Nate Behrens. The International Wooie Code is a source of policy statements. What's needed right now is the recognition that we need to do the work, and then we need to figure out what the priorities are. A visual for why building materials matter and how you build matters. Fire-resistant roofs save lives by dramatically reducing the chance of burning from embers landing on your roof. And so what you see is a comparison of a wood-roofed building versus a fire-resistant building. And even when you're furthest away from where the fire started, so furthest from the trees, there's a point, I think it's point-seven percent of the fire-resistant roof does not go up, but it's twenty-four percent over on the other side of the wood roof that does go up, even when you're far away. And that's just from embers that will fly with the wind and land. Fire-resistant siding, appropriately sized screening over soffits and other openings keep embers from starting a fire inside your house. So that's still in that other picture. I went a little bit too fast. Sorry about that, Josh. So on the other one, you see that wind is blowing, that picks embers up, they hit the side of the building, but they can also go into those soffits that are under the eaves, and if your screen is too big, those embers will go right inside and start a fire in your attic. So that is just a small change that we can make. It's just change that screening, make it smaller sized. Your work as city council comes to deciding what to focus on policy-wise. Awareness on what to do, when, why, and with who is key. Promoting existing programs through a policy decision could be a start. Using a wildfire lens when looking at new development, so that future development is wildfire resilient, needs to happen now. Buildings easily last a hundred years or more. What we do now impacts the future community. Including the intention to collaborate in your plan sets the stage for a community wildfire planning, prevention plan, CWPP for short, for Pierce County, and that is something that DNR is now considering promoting. We have a new community manager, resource manager with DNR that is over all of Washington, and that is what he has in mind for Pierce County, you know, depending on what Pierce County thinks. So that's just something to think about. Shalane County and Mason County have CWPPs in place, and that gives access to federal funding. So this is something that's been drilled into me over and over again. If you don't have a plan, you don't have access to federal funding. You have to have a plan or at least show that a plan is in development before you can apply for funding and think of getting it. It also helps if you're collaborating with more than one community. That is not just you to get at that funding. So in terms of funding, Nick Kusick of the Pierce County Pierce Conservation District has been in touch with Chief Waters on inquiring some funding through a grant that's available right now for assessments and shipper services and some other things. I don't know where that is, but I do know that Nick has the intention of getting that grant out next week, because it all needs, the work needs to be done before the end of June. That is short-term work. DNR is hiring a Western Washington wildfire coordinator this summer, who along with Nate Behrens can provide guidance and resources for this work, but they need to see the intention as in a plan that's coming on board. As I said before, federal funding also relies on a plan or the intention to have a plan in place. So what are your next steps? Think about including wildfire resiliency policy in the upcoming comp planning process. Partner with other municipalities. One thing that Climate Pierce County is exploring with the Sustainability Department within Pierce County and with other organizations is a wildfire comp plan workshop, and we'll pursue that if there's enough interest. So we've heard some interest, but the more interest is, the more likely it is that it's going to happen. So I would need to hear back from you, says, yeah, Gig Harbor's on board, so, you know, that helps. And engaging with, you know, those organizations, Pierce Conservation District, Department of Natural Resources, Pierce County, the native tribes, Pualup, Nisqually, and Muckleshoot, to define and develop a CWPP, even putting that into your comp plan, that that is of interest to you, is worth doing. Lakewood has a line in their comp plan, because they recently did their environmental chapter, and there's a climate, and I don't know that you guys have looked at that, but there is something in there about doing CWPP work, just the intention. So that line is already in there. So that's something to think about. That's all it needs to be, is that we intend to do this. Though some more resources, that first one is a place where you can ask questions and get answers, and that's a community that's growing. The second one is from the city of Ashland, Oregon, and they really went full till into Ashland Firewise, and they have, that website there also has on it on the side, there's an ordinance that they used on what they want to do with any new development that goes, like for fences, porches, things that you can do and can't do. So that might be a model that you could consider looking at. And then there's the Managing Western Washington Wildfire Risk in a Changing Climate that was written through the U Dub Climate Group, and it is a good overview of what's coming and what people are doing. So I'm going to leave it at that. Guys have questions? There's some experts here who can also answer questions, probably ones that I can't, but otherwise, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, Dr. Ellie, thank you so much. This was a really good presentation tonight. It's very informative. You know, I'm reminded that a couple of weeks ago, Chief, our Fire Chief, Don, was here, and he said the thing that keeps him up at night is a fire in Gig Harbor, because it won't be about how to put the fire out, it will be how to evacuate our citizens, because it will be too large probably to put out. I'm also reminded of Chief Waters' famous statement, "If it is predictable, it's preventable." And so I think those are very good things from our fire department. You know, the Department of Natural Resources had a climate resiliency plan in February two thousand and twenty, and one of the things they put in their climate resilient plan was to reduce human-caused wildfire ignitions and address increasing wildfire risk in the wildland-urban interface. And so hopefully, as Gig Harbor goes forward with our Climate Advisory Board and our comprehensive plan, we will, we will pay special attention to these issues. So thank you again for being here tonight.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes, thank you very much. This was very interesting. I lived in Anchorage for twenty-four years, and Anchorage is very much a firewise community, so I'm well-versed in firewise and what it can do. And so I understand that we have a lot of planning that we need to do, especially before we can get those much-needed federal funds that are important to all of it. But I'm wondering, and this may be a question for one of the other people who are here too, what is Pierce County planning to do this summer as far as education goes around these existing programs like firewise, or is anything in the works?
So I would refer you back to the May twenty-six webinar that is on firewise that's being put on by Pierce Conservation District plus several other fire departments and organizations. So that one, anyone can go to. They are, so far, I think there's like a hundred and fifty people signed up for it. They were hoping for two hundred, but maybe it'll surpass that. I don't know. And they're very interested in having homeowners' associations go, because one of the things that they're noticing is homeowners' associations will have rules about, like, the open green spaces, that you're not supposed to do anything to them. You just let them sit there, and that turns into a fuel hazard where a wildfire can start. So that people know that is important, because most of people will say, well, that's what it says, so it must be right. Well, actually, it's not right. Things do need to be managed. You can't just let them go.
So after that webinar, is there any kind of an ongoing communications, education effort around firewise or outreach to HOAs, or is that part of what we need to plan for and get more money for?
That's probably somewhat what you need to plan for. It is also Nick's intention, who is spearheading this, to make the program move forward. But, you know, we're just starting this process. We started work probably beginning April, maybe mid-March. So we are where we are. We're doing our best. So whatever you can do to help and support, you know, fantastic.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
No? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Klaus McGinn. It was an excellent presentation. I had a comment and a question. First comment is, I know that our Climate Change Action Board is going to be looking at a lot of things, and I think this is probably going to be one of those, I'm hoping, might result in either being put into a climate action plan, or even putting in some of it into an urban forest management plan, or even changing some of our building codes. So I'm just going to put that out there, that this will not be left behind. My second question, though, was, there's a lot of outstanding expertise over there in a corner, fire expertise and wildland-fire expertise. One question that I wanted to pose, and maybe one of you could come up, or several of you could come up, and maybe address people that might say, well, gosh, there's lots of trees around here, and I see forest fires and wildfires on the TV, and it's always some house out in the middle of nowhere that can get burned down. But I'm in a house, I'm in the middle of a mess of other houses. There aren't any big trees around me. Do I need to worry?
Look down.
And said, who's the oldest? Do you go? Yeah, everybody's affected by wildfire, whether their home, the large trees right next to you or not, you know, like the doctor's presentation. Embers can fly and land on homes and start shrubs and bushes and decks on fire. So you don't have to have a large trees right up next to your home. That can happen, just like wood piles next to your home, or trees or shrubs next to your home, or having a wood roof, and embers can fly through that and start your house on fire.
So it doesn't have to be right next to trees, and even if I have an asphalt shingle roof, there's also a threat there, right?
There's always a threat. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't want to be an alarmist, but at the same time, you know, we're communities, we've lost hundreds and thousands of homes in lots of communities. Like I told you last time, I was chief in Boise, where we burned over twenty homes and lost lives in one fire, and there was one every single year that took out many, many homes. And we didn't have the fuel load that we have here. So it's very, very possible.
We also saw that in Santa Rosa, California, too, when it wiped out that housing tract, and I think there's a Kmart next door. It's like, it jumped the whole freeway, and these were not houses that were packed in with trees. This was what, in areas that I live in, it was terrifying to see. They were just burned to the ground.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Don.
I have a question. Chief, Chief Don.
Chief, we have one more question.
I have one more question for you. Thanks. So in California, they require, in some places, sprinklers on the roofs. Who wet down the roofs, is that important? Is that something that we would ever think about here?
Mayor, councilmembers, sometimes they do have residential sprinklers, usually inside the home. I don't know about on-the-roof exterior type. I think what's more important than an exterior sprinkler of some kind is just the firewise that we were talking about. That word's used a lot, but encompassing all those programs of making sure that, you know, you don't have a wood roof, that you clean the gutters, that you take all those proper precautions, that you cut back all the fuels away from your home, and that we do the education within our communities.
And if we had sprinklers inside the homes, is that a good thing to have if there are fires outside the homes?
Mayor and councilmember, I'm fire chief. I would never be opposed to sprinklers. I'm also a realist, and I'm also been there. So a wildfire that does start on the exterior home, you know, it would have to get interior before those sprinklers went off. But many times, it gets in the soffits or breaks out a window because of a bush, and is on fire right outside your home, will break out the window, and then that interior sprinkler could knock it down.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you. I just had a couple comments and a question. So one, in terms of spreading the news about firewise, we have a wonderful organization here in the Gig Harbor Cape Peninsula called Pepsi, the Peninsula Emergency Preparedness Coalition. They are wonderful, and, you know, they really focus a lot on the Cascadia Subduction Zone and, you know, the big earthquake and all of that good stuff that's going to eventually eventually happen. But they talk about all sorts of emergencies, and this might be something that they could add to their presentations. They reach out to homeowner groups and do lots of, actually, they do presentations to all sorts of clubs and organizations. So in terms of spreading some of the practical things that people can do in their homes, that might be a good group to connect with. I was really happy that you gave a link to that community in Ashland, Oregon, because the question I had was, like, where can we go for best practices? Who's doing this well? Because there's probably a lot of different policies that we could adopt, building code changes, things like that. But in terms of having a list of what the options are and what are the most effective would be really helpful. So that'll be good to take a look at. And then my last question is, on your map, obviously Gig Harbor is a very small part of that area that's classified as wildland- urban interface. So could you clarify what the county is doing? Because most of that is in the county, in terms of creating a plan, because it would be great if we could collaborate and have similar policies and procedures and standards for building with the county.
Oh, absolutely. And the experts behind me may have more information, but so far, my impression is that the county is not focusing on this. Their approach to climate right now is the Pierce County Sustainability Plan that was passed in two thousand and thirty, and that is about getting down greenhouse gas emissions. It is not about climate impacts. So climate impacts is not yet something that's being focused on. I did hear rumor that the Wildland Urban Interface Code may be adopted, but I don't know when. So that's a huge question mark at this point. So I think what the county is will do is going to come from agitation from my group and Nick and others in saying, you need to move on this. So we have been talking to fire departments across Pierce County, and we've been to Eatonville, we've been to Ordin, you know, we've been to Bonnie Lake, Buckley, and I'm going to try and get in touch with DuPont, that also has a fair amount of wooie in it. And hopefully, by those voices starting to talk to one another, we will make some progress. It is also, the proclamation was through Dick Murray, who's one of the council members. So we're going to go back to talking to him because he clearly has an interest. And the other group, I don't know if you're aware, but there was a Pierce County Climate, Rural Climate Dialogues done that was led by the Pierce Conservation District again, and they got a statistical sampling of folks out of East Pierce County, and wildfire rose to the top of their list of concerns. These are just, you know, residents who live out there and said, well, who's going to tell us? Who's going to provide us with equipment when the air is smoky, just regular filters? How do we do that? How do we get the money for that? How do we support our neighbors when there is a fire and they don't have a car or whatever? So just that kind of awareness is something that citizens are beginning to feel because there are wildfires going around. So it's going to take a lot of voices. This is in the early stages. That's the best I can tell you.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. That's why you're here.
Welcome.
Dale Hydell, I'm the captain with Cape Peninsula Fire. Hi, Robin. Thank you for inviting Chief Waters and Ellie, Dr. Ellie. One thing I want to emphasize is we have standalone properties that can be, the structures can be hardened, the landscape can be treated mechanically, and in some cases with prescribed fire and different means. But the real issue that we see, and by the way, on the Cape Peninsula, we're very excited about the direction and momentum of this program in the county and really in the Northwest. And you know, we talk about homes being prepared, you know, like setbacks and drought-resistant vegetation and and hardening the structure with fire-resistant construction materials, and all these different things that have been discussed today, and some of you are already very aware of. But, you know, structures are a fuel bed. We talk about these different fuel types, grass and shrubs and timber, and but structures are actually a fuel bed as well. So I've been on, I manage our wildland fire program, and I've been fighting wildfires for a long time, project fires in-state and out-of-state. And, you know, what we're seeing is sure, the ember wash is the primary culprit for ignitions, right? In some cases, radiant heat and all these different methods of heat transfer. But even if there are no embers, if the homes are close enough together, and you've got a wind-driven fire, a whole development can burn down in a couple of hours. And we could talk all day about what's causing climate change, but we know it's happening. And it's getting warmer and drier in the Northwest. We're already seeing big fires on the west side of the Cascade Range. And, you know, we really do need to support this direction and this movement. California has already developed 500, more than 500 firewise communities. You know, they're doing mechanical treatments for access, you know, adequate access and egress for these communities. That's a big issue. And, you know, just all the work that's going into this is happening, and it's, you know, we need to embrace it as well. So it's one of my primary point is that housing developments, you can have 10 houses in a row that are all firewised, and you would think that they would be fine, but they may not if houses all around them are burning, right? Embers, radiant heat, direct flame transfer, you know, heat transfer. So anyway, not to get into the science of it too much or off into the weeds about it, but I can say that our fire chief on the Keep Peninsula, and our PIO, and all of us out there in the community were really supportive of what's happening in the county and hope that you are as well. Any questions for me?
Actually, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I had one. I think what keeps me up at night and probably everybody else here is, although it's tragic to see houses burned down, my main concern is how do we get people out of harm's way during an event like that? I, we see what's happened just with the closure of our Harborview Stinson roundabout, and that's one-way traffic. And we've seen other times when the freeway gets jammed up from a wreck. I don't know how we would get people down. That's
And that's Chief Don's concern, apparently, and all of our concern, access. You know, when we do structure protection, wildland urban interface, structure protection out on wildfires, one of the first things we look at is, with law enforcement, how are we going to get people out of there? And how are we going to get ourselves in there and do the work that needs to be done? And then get ourselves out if we have, you know, a big blow up. And so access and egress is key in these community response plans. So that is a huge factor. As I mentioned earlier, one of the primary methods for mitigating that risk, facilitating egress, access and egress, is mechanical treatments along the road sides. You know, it doesn't necessarily mean wiping out all the trees, you know, cutting them all down, but getting in there and getting rid of a lot of the shrub and ladder fuels that carry fire into the overstory, and basically reducing the fuel loading so that if there is fire in those areas of access and egress, it's low intensity, and people can come and go through there.
Yeah, thank you. I think the HOA education piece is going to be really important. Each individual neighborhood community having their own plan will help you and help them as well. So I liked that HOA piece. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Captain and Chief, and Chief Roberts, sorry, Waters. My question actually is for Director Knutson. If council decided they wanted to move forward with some planning, what would be the next steps for us?
I'll sit down.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Denson, I do believe the first thing that we would need to do is discuss this within our comprehensive plan. I don't believe that we have language. I know that we do not have climate change language, although we will be working on that this year. This would be a good opportunity to add something through that committee's work into the comprehensive plan. That would be the first step.
Great. Thank you so much for being here. Is there anything else that you wanted to add in closing?
Yeah, I guess I do have a curiosity. If we set up a comprehensive planning workshop around wildfire policy, is this something that Gig Harbor is interested in having someone participate in? It would be directed at planners, not at city council members. That's not a purpose. And the purpose is really to look at policy and prioritizing and figuring out, okay, what are we going to do first? So I'm going to leave you with that question. Just let me know the answer at some point.
We surely will. Thank you. Thank you again for being here. Okay, lots to think about. So for my mayor's report this evening, I have some exciting news to share with you all. Last Friday afternoon, the city closed on a land purchase of 11 and a half acres off of Harborview Drive above and next to the wastewater treatment plant. The North Creek Salmon Heritage Conservation Area is a streamside intact forest with archaeological significance to the P'Alup Tribe of Indians and will now be preserved forever in the heart of downtown. I would like to thank the wonderful sellers of this beautiful property, Paul and Phyllis Lyons, who represent their family heritage and trust. They were wonderful to work with, and we are so happy to have been given this opportunity. I would also like to thank the P'Alup Tribe of Indians, whose early contribution helped make this acquisition of regional significance. We could not have completed this purchase without the dedication of our amazing staff, who helped us see this over the finish line. And finally, I would like to thank the Pierce County Conservation Features Program, who also played an integral part in this land acquisition. We will be having a formal celebration ceremony in the near future, and I will keep you updated on the details as they unfold. Congratulations to all who were involved, and congratulations to our city. This is really exciting. And my other update is Harborview Stinson. I'm going to call on our Public Works Director, Jeff Langholm, to give us an update on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, if you haven't driven through the Harborview Stinson intersection lately, you might not have seen the progress contractors made. The subgrade, the gravel crushed rock is all down. That has really helped during these recent rain events, because the soil is stable. We're not having erosion come off that site. The work that's coming in the near future is concrete work. That, of course, requires some drier weather. Tomorrow is a start, but we need a few days of that to get moving. So it's going to be hit and miss this week with the weather forecast, but the contractor is going to be doing crosswalks, curb and gutter, and sidewalk. They're going to be doing some work also down below on the end boat parcel itself, doing some subgrade down there and some retaining wall preparation. And then the electrical contractor is coming in to do, put some conduit in and some, prepare for some foundations for the streetlights. So progressing slowly.
Thank you so much. It is looking really good down there. All right. We do not have a city administrators' report this evening, so we will move on to public comment on non-agenda items. First, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? Yes, come forward. You will have three minutes to speak, and please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mike Shipman. I live on the Finn Home District up on the hill. I'm the guy that has to go around to get here. I've done that three times, three times today. I enjoy the drive. I'm here basically because I'm concerned about public safety on Prentice. I've lived in this harbor for 30 years. I've watched Prentice grow in traffic, and I'm the guy who walks it. And I'm the guy who's overly enjoyed that the city Gig Harbor is going to actually put a $1.5 million sidewalk on that street. But I'm concerned about the bigger issue. Bigger issue is public safety on Prentice. You should go spend some time on Prentice between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00 p.m. It's devastating to watch terrible parents, crazy parents, trying to pick up their kids. I can pass out a handout if I can give it to y'all. You tell me what I need to do.
Oh, sure. Jeff, would you mind? Thank you so much.
What we have is a twofold issue. The sidewalk's one thing. People walk who live in the community in there. But between the hours 2:00 to 5:00, which used to be when the school got out, you have parents driving down Prentice.
Thank you. Here we can share.
Ridlocking Prentice, picking up their kids or trying to pick up their kids, heading eastbound on Prentice. And they even drive and park on the oncoming lane. My wife and I and several residents in our area have been stopped from, we've been, you know, put in a corner, and we can't get out of our car on Prentice. So the net of it is, that coupled with kids running out of school, jumping through cars, reckless driving, because once a parent who wants to get to some other event picks up their kid, they're trying to get out of there, and they're upset, and there's four pictures. That's just this week. Those are four pictures. Kids jumping over fenders, hoods, I mean, and it happens between 2:00 and 5:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m., and you got all these events. And Prentice is not a street that should ever be parked on, because you're parking in the street. The good news is, I've reached out to the city several times and not gotten much action. I've had several conversations with a couple council people prior to some of your election and since then. And I finally got a hold of the chief, and today he was kind enough to spend time with me, and we're going to go look at it tomorrow, and hopefully, there'll be a bunch of crazy people on Prentice. There may not be, but he's been kind enough to be the first one to really be concerned about the issue. So I'm asking for something to be done. I've also planned to go to the Peninsula School District meeting on Thursday and meet with Lori, and hopefully, we can get some action. But I will tell you from experience, and my wife and I walk that street just about every day, and we drive it all the time. You know, and there is a great big bump in the road there, where if you really accelerate on the westbound lane, you could probably jump over the cars, but my wife informs me my car shouldn't be doing that. So the bottom line is, Prentice needs some attention. I'd like to see no parking, no stopping, no standing for vehicles on Prentice. And there's plenty of room to put a road around that property. I mean, come on, we spent $1.5 million for a sidewalk. Maybe the number one priority of Peninsula School District, and I've asked the city to dialogue with them, but I haven't got any action yet, the number one priority of Peninsula School District is protect students. One's going to get killed real soon. I've seen too many close calls and some pretty wild parents wanting to get out of there. And it's scaring me. It's causing me to not sleep at night. So I'm asking you to do something, take some action, and work with the district to try to get something taken care of. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Okay, Josh, I know we have one written comment at least, I believe, to be read. Is that correct?
Yes, we have one written comment, and I will read that one right now. Hold on one second here. This is from Marilyn Collier, who is at 4340 Borgan Boulevard. She writes, "The Sports Complex Impact Steering Committee was formed to address future impacts from the sports complex on the Harbor Hill, Gig Harbor North, and waterfront districts of our city. A petition was signed with signatures of 200 concerned citizens was submitted to the city council on April 25, 2018. We are very pleased at the response by the mayor and city council to address these concerns in a study session on May 26. We would like to thank city staff for the very successful May 7 educational open house that highlighted many details of the history and current planning of the sports complex in Harbor Hill. We support the city's vision statement that highlights its focus on livability and environmental stewardship, two areas that are at the center of the debate on how the sports complex might impact the aims for our city. These priorities have been referenced in the comprehensive plan for many years, and one that is very apt is under the heading Gig Harbor North Neighborhood Design Areas, which identifies the need for the retention of large natural areas. The impact of the loss of almost all open space in our community, once the sports complex is built, must therefore resonate with the city. We encourage the mayor and council to answer the question, is the city's plan for a regional sports facility likely to irreversibly change the small-city feel of Gig Harbor as well as its character and reputation as an idyllic maritime city surrounded by a forested landscape? For Gig Harbor North and Harbor Hill, the issue is two-pronged. Half of its remaining open space will be replaced with a project that will bring heavy traffic. Might that traffic create roundabout to roundabout gridlock from Highway 16? And impede access to emergency vehicles? Might it also change the waterfront wherever, as drivers seek alternate routes to enter and leave the area? How will tourism be impacted if there is so much traffic and nowhere to park? We want to thank the mayor, city council, and city staff for listening and responding to concerns of our community. Our intention is to ensure that the Gig Harbor of tomorrow is one that we can be proud of as the Gig Harbor of today."
Thank you. Is there anyone on our virtual audience that would like to raise their hand and provide a comment on a non-agenda item? Any hands raised that you see, Josh?
I don't see any raised hands.
Okay. I will close the public comment. Just as a note, any comments that were sent in for tonight's meeting that did not meet the criteria for public comment on our agenda? It's the fourth paragraph on our agenda. All comments sent to the mayor and council email address have already been received and read by myself and the council. So rest assured, your comments have been received and read. We thank you for taking the time to send those comments to us. But for those that are wishing to have a public comment read out loud, just be sure to follow the exact instructions in that fourth paragraph on the agenda, and those comments will be read out loud. Okay, so we will move on to new business item one, which is Resolution 1243, declaring an emergency for Borgan Boulevard pavement repair. And the suggested motion is to move to approve Resolution 1243. And this is our Public Works Director, Jeff Langholm, for the report.
Thank you, Mayor Markley. The resolution you have before you tonight is a continuation for an emergency declaration based on the previous emergency declaration for a failed roadway in subsection in Borgan Boulevard. The previous emergency work was performed by Papen Sons per Resolution 1236 that was adopted at the May 28 council meeting. As a result, and associated with this resolution, the city has contracted with HWA Geo Sciences to perform geotechnical work in the roadway to look at subsurface soils. The resolution tonight will declare the emergency as required by the city's purchasing and contracting policy. The city has already entered into that contract. The consultant is scheduled to be on-site tomorrow to perform their soil borings, and will take that information, prepare a design to be handed off to a contractor to come back and actually complete the work. So you will be seeing another emergency declaration once we get a contractor on board to actually complete the work. So with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Wook?
Yes. Do we have any idea how long it will take to get a reading on their core work?
We don't have an exact date, but I expect it's just going to be a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none. I will open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward to speak on this agenda item? Okay, Josh, are there any of our virtual audience, hands raised for this agenda item?
I do not see any raised hands for this item, and no written comments were submitted.
Okay, great. I will close the public comment. Any other deliberation by council? Okay, Councilmember Runberg.
1243, declaring an emergency on Borgan Boulevard for payment repair.
Back again.
That's a tie, I think, but I think Councilmember Wook could beat you just a little bit. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other deliberation? I'm not seeing any. Do we have, all those in? a motion and a second. Any other deliberation? I'm not seeing any. Do we have, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. We will move on to new business item two, which is the first reading and adoption of Ordnance 1487, amending the city's personnel salary schedule. And the suggested motion for this item is move to approve ordinance 1487, and this report will come from our city clerk, Josh Stecker, with assistance potentially from Director Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This ordinance is to adopt on first reading ordinance 1487, which will amend the salary schedules from the 2022 budget. During the 2022 budget process, when we were preparing the salary schedules, we added a position for a code enforcement officer. Salary schedule was adopted, but that salary schedule had not been cleared and approved with the Teamsters Union Local Number 117. After adopting it, we went back and spoke with the union and negotiated a new salary that represents an increase from what was initially adopted. This new salary is based on research from what other similar positions are are earning. The union has signed off on it. They're okay with it. It's in line with generally what other code enforcement officers are being paid. So we're asking council to approve this new salary range. In addition to that, ordinance 1487 also correct, corrects an error that we had on ordinance 1481. 1481 was the first ordinance to amend the salary structure for the 2022 budget. At that time, we had just completed negotiating the collective bargaining agreement for our supervisory unit. That negotiation adopted a new range of salaries, and then in addition to that new range of salaries, it automatically kicked in a three and a half percent cost of living adjustment for 2022. Unfortunately, when we prepared the ordinance, we uploaded the salary structure, the agreed salary range for 2021, and we did not include the correct salary range in the ordinance. The payroll department has all along been aware of what the supervisory unit is supposed to be paid, and they've been paying them the correct salary. The ordinance that we adopted just doesn't reflect that. So 1487 corrects that. It has the correct salary range for the supervisory unit that includes the three and a half percent COLO that we had intended to give them all along. So that is a procedural clerical error that we're fixing with this ordinance. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or if you have questions about the code enforcement officer position, you need Development Director Katrina Knutson is here to answer them, or if there's just general budget questions, I think Dave can answer those.
Okay, great. Thank you, Josh. Are there, I see some lights for clarifying questions from council. Councilmember Rodenberg, did you have your light on? Okay, Councilmember Wook?
Yes, and so when would code enforcer Logit begin his full-time work?
I do not have an exact date for you. However, what I will say is that our HR department is officially up and running with Shannon and Desiree both being on board, as well as Diane Bertram assisting. We need to get the community service officer position posted. It's been the city's goal all along not to leave Chief Bucy and the police department in a bad position with the evidence room. And so Adam would maintain his dual or triple reporting structure until such a time that the community service officer position is filled.
All right, he's, he has a reputation for being a really good negotiator, and so I'm looking forward to having him full-time.
He's, he's very, very much looking forward to, you know, the transition to having one focus and one boss.
Only, only one job at this city instead of three.
Yes.
Yes.
But we intend to, the mayor and to the city administrator have said that they want to keep council apprised of as that moves forward. So we'll let you know the date as it comes forward.
Thank you. That's important. Thanks.
We call him Superman around here. Any other questions, clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none. I will open up the public comment. Anyone from the audience wish to speak on this item? Okay, Josh, any written comments submitted or any hands raised for our virtual audience this evening?
There are no written comments for this. I do not see any raised hands from our Zoom callers.
Okay, great. Thank you. I will close the public comment. Any council deliberation? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion? They're, they're asking it to be adopted on the first reading, if that is amendable to council. So if there is a motion to approve ordinance 1487.
I move to approve ordinance 1487.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. And we will move on to council reports and comments. Councilmember Wook?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of comments. I'm happy to say that Jenny Listens, which is my monthly open house, is, will be zooming this Wednesday, and I have a special guest. Director Langham will be with me at 5:00 on Wednesday on Zoom. And for those folks listening, you can get the Zoom address from my Facebook page. I'm looking forward to that, and hopefully, we'll have some citizens come and ask you questions. And so that's good. And we have some good news about the roundabout as long as we get some decent weather. So happy to say that. I also want to give a great big shout out to our city clerk, Jock Stecker, and our assistant city clerk, Tiffany. I went today to the vote tracker page and to check on something, and it has been updated from October. It's been a month, it's been a couple of months since that was, has been updated, and it's an important document. And I'd like to thank them for doing that. It's, it's really important. I also want to thank and congratulate the police department on their two new hybrid vehicles, I think. And that's a great step, I think, for for our police department to add to our hybrid group in Gig Harbor. So congratulations on that. And I attended the open house on Saturday, and it was a great presentation with the community director Knutson and our parks manager, Matt Keough, and Aaron with our traffic engineer. And so it was really good. I think it was well-attended, and there was some very good poster. It was really large. People could see the timeline, which I think was important, and people could take away the timeline, which I think was really nice, too. So for everybody who put together that open house and got the word out to our community, thank you so much for that. I think it was really helpful.
Thank you for that. Any other comments from council or reports? Councilmember Lichten?
Hi, yes, thank you, Mayor Markley. I just have a couple of comments, and it's in regard to a conversation that I had with a citizen in the last week here in Gig Harbor. This week, I was contacted by a citizen who shared a very heartfelt conversation and a personal story of what it feels like to be a member of the LGBTQ plus community in our city. I heard the story. I thought they might call in and speak tonight. They did not. I'm hoping they will in the future. Was moved by their experiences, and they expressed that they're looking for Gig Harbor to make a statement in recognition, resolution, or proclamation of some sort in regards to Pride Month, which is normally June here in Gig Harbor. Gig Harbor has declared itself a welcoming committee, and together with staff, we have included the goal of diversity, inclusion, and equity in our two-year strategic plan. I preface this by saying I have tremendous respect for all the people sitting up here next to me on the Diaz, to both my left and my right, every one of you. And I just really would ask that we thoughtfully consider a formal show of support for our LGBTQ plus friends, families, coworkers, and neighbors. I believe this could show citizens that no matter how you identify or who you love, you're welcome in Gig Harbor. I would appreciate mayor or council just to discuss this, think about it, and I welcome any comments or suggestions.
Thank you, Councilmember Lichten. Councilmember Denson?
Yes, I just want to thank Councilmember Lichten for bringing this forward and thank the the community person who felt comfortable having that conversation with you. These are incredibly divisive times we live in, and partisan times, and recognizing and supporting and celebrating LGBTQ people should not be partisan. It's about people. It shouldn't be divisive. These are our neighbors and our friends, and they are some of us as well. And anything that we can do to make folks feel comfortable and welcome and supported and celebrated equally, I certainly want to be a part of. So thank you for bringing this forward, and I hope, I'm really hopeful, because I do have a lot of respect for people up here as well, that we can come together with compassion and maturity and recognize and support this community in a really visible way, because that's something that would make me really proud of our community and our council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wook?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Lichten, thank you so much. And you put it beautifully. We are a welcoming community to all people, and we hope all, everyone feels welcome in Gig Harbor, and this should never be a divisive issue. So I would like very much to sign on to this, and I need to know how this happens. Maybe our city clerk could tell us if we need to have a resolution, if we do a proclamation. How does this, how do we move this forward, Josh?
It's, it sounds like if we have the full support of the council, then probably the best idea is to bring forward a resolution, probably in consultation with Councilmember Lichten's. Just bring it back to council. It'd be probably, sounds like something similar to the resolution we passed adopting Native American Heritage Month in November. Something that just makes perpetual recognition.
That sounds great. I think it's, June is the month, isn't it? And can we get this on the council agenda for the next council meeting?
I think, I think that's a possibility. I don't see any difficulty doing that. Yeah, I think if the mayor and city administrator are on board with that, we can, we can make that happen.
I'm happy to work with Councilmember Lichten on writing that resolution.
Okay.
Everybody involved.
Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is something I support very strongly, and I'm glad Councilmember Wook asked what we can do next. And thank you, Josh, for coming up with that. I'd like to see it on our next council meeting in May so that then we can perhaps hit the June eight. That would be great.
Okay, so we have a majority of council support. And so Councilmember Lichten, maybe I'll have you contact Josh, and you guys can get in touch, and Councilmember Barber as well, whoever like to, would like to work on that language, and then we'll have that on our next meeting. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Sure, I was just going to say thank you. I'm happy to work with Josh, and I'm happy to respect people, you know, whether they support or not. You know, we, we are going to work together. So thank you. I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Councilmember Denson, did you have a comment? Oh, okay. Any other comments from council? Okay, announcement of upcoming meetings attached to our agenda is our agenda planning schedule. And then we also now, at the end of every agenda, attach our, adopted two-year, two-year strategic plan. So if there is nothing else for the good of the order, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Good evening, everyone.